Department that persons can also be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, resisting arrest is defined as knowingly resisting or obstructing the performance by one known to be a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institutional employee of an authorized act within his or her official capacity. This constitutes a Class A misdemeanor. The statute requires that the act of resistance must involve some physical act that imposes an obstacle that may impede, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of official duties. Examples include struggling, wrestling, going limp, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist an arrest by a known peace officer. Even if the arrest is believed to be or in fact unlawful, resistance of even a lawful arrest by a known officer is a violation of the state's statute. So today, once we exit the meeting and the meeting has adjourned, we're gonna actually everyone leave swiftly. Uh, we have had previous incidences where there've been, um, just some altercations and we just wanna limit all those things from happening. So we're just gonna ask that once the meeting is over, everybody can expedite, uh, grab your belongings and leave the hour building and to the parking lot, okay? Thank you.
Please connect to your tablet. Please connect to your tablet.
We have all this meeting to order. This is the City of Harvey Council Meeting, day is Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, eight hundred and seven, open. Now, I ask all of the, um, all the persons, council members to sign in, to mark themselves present. We have four. Next is certification and pledge allegiance. Deacon, uh...
Sorry, there's one more roll call.
Okay.
One more roll call?
One more.
Alderman, what?
None, or? Now, our next is certification and pledge allegiance. Deacon Rogers, if you'd be so kind as to, uh, lead us forward. Thank you.
I bow as a prayer. Gracious Lord, as we petition your strong grace, Lord Jesus, we ask and lower for you to usher in the Holy Spirit into this monthly city council meeting here in the City of Harvey. Lord Jesus, we give thanks to each and every individual, just under the sound of our voice, that decided to come in and show interest in what governs, what governs and what goes on here in this great city. Lord Jesus, we asking you, Lord, to touch our hearts, our minds, and our tongues, Lord Jesus, and what we do, we do decent and in order. Lord Jesus, we asking you for a special prayer, Lord Jesus, that during this holiday season, that each and every family and each and every individual has a wonderful Thanksgiving. This is our prayer, Lord, and we ask it out in the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
For we to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, five on the agenda is the swearing in ceremony for the Harvey Fire Department. Chief.
Good evening, America, evening, everybody. Tonight, we have four members that have completed their one-year probation and also met the requirements by the Illinois State Fire Marshal to, uh, keep their basic firefighting operational. Um, they also are performing to the level of our standards, so they are Preston Jackson, Shamar Shelton, Mark Cini, Jeff Fisher. Uh, Jeff Fisher is a resident of the City of Harvey, so we always, uh, love to have , um, workers in our city and also who's a veteran, so thank you for your service. And also mayor, uh, we have Richard Dewar in the back, he completed thirty years, uh, yesterday, so definitely, uh, for the nation.
Preston Jackson. I'm Preston Jackson, having been appointed to the office of firefighter.
Hi, Preston Jackson.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter.
I've been appointed to the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey and the County of Cook.
The City of Harvey and the County of Cook.
Before said.
Before said.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey.
In the City of Harvey.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I'm Mark Cini.
I am Mark Cini.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey and the County of Cook.
City of Harvey and the County of Cook.
Before said.
Before said.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of firefighter.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey.
City of Harvey.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I'm Shamar Shelton.
I'm Shamar Shelton.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter. In the City of Harvey and the County of Cook. Before said. To solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of firefighter. In the City of Harvey. According to the best of my ability. I'm like Jordan Fisher.
I, Jordan Fisher.
I have been appointed to the office of firefighter.
I've been appointed to the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey.
In the City of Harvey.
In the County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Before said.
Before said.
To solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
Of the office of firefighter.
In the City of Harvey.
In the City of Harvey.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So we present to you our new holiday program.
I know, but I gotta call. Guys, thank you very much, God bless and please be safe.
I'd just like to, uh, thank you, Jordan, for your service, thank you for your dedication to the City of Harvey.
Thank you.
And be safe.
We want to take a ten-minute recess, so if there's any family members that wanna grab extra photos or do anything, if you go here to do that, we'll go ahead and we'll wait for you in ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, once again, uh, I say to my prayer that, uh, this is the, uh, uh, spirit of, uh, Thanksgiving. Um, a lot of people like to go out and do power shopping, last Friday's coming up, so don't waste all your money in one place. I had an opportunity this week to go out to the elementary school called Real Man Read. Um, read a couple of books to the first graders. It was called Jet the Cat, was fairly simple. Then I went up and read to the sixth graders, which was a little more difficult. Thank God for reading. Well, a couple of days ago, it was also known as, um, Brothers, Brothers' Day. And it was sent to me, uh, one of my brothers, "Hey, brother, life is too short, wake up and regret, so the people who you treat you right forgive you towards your own business because you can't believe everything happens for a reason. If you get a second chance, grab it with both hands. If it changes your life, let it. Take a few minutes to think before you act. You're mad, forgive quickly. God never said like..." I had touched behind and I had an opportunity to send that out to a lot of brothers and a lot of residents of my ward. This has been, uh, some very exciting times and, uh, I really don't take anything for granted. I thank God for the residents of the sixth ward because they've shown love to me and I'd like to also, um, put out a special shout-out to our Harvey Street Department. They got the ward and, actually, the city, but the sixth ward is looking great. I've had an opportunity for the past couple of days to pass out turkeys. Everybody didn't get one, but especially people as close to my heart that saw the voter's registration list did get one. So, um, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm happy and I'm excited about, uh, the way that the city is spiraling. I like the direction that we're traveling in and I just, like I say, everybody be blessed and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Next, we have the all-person from the, um, second ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Greet the City of Harvey. I want to first say happy Thanksgiving. I wish you and yours a very happy holiday. I want to say congratulations again to the newly sworn in fire department, uh, and my prayers and condolences to the victims of the train incident that happened on one hundred and fifty-second park back on November the twentieth. Uh, you all received the handout, that's our new second ward answer, so thank you all. Uh, we have a digital literacy collaborative program going with Chicago State University. Just simply need to scan the QR codes, register, then complete, uh, the different activities online. And then Saturday, December the twenty-first, from eleven AM to three, this is our second annual Christmas event. Last year, we partnered with Harvey School District one fifty-two. This year, we'll be partnering with District two oh five Thorn High School, and the event will be in the Thornfield House. I just got some things I wanna put on your mind this evening in the City of Harvey. When will enough simply be enough? Right? Or as famous book hangman once stated, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." Nineteen sixty-four, my school war at the Mississippi delegate convention. Well, I'm gonna tell you what I'm sick and tired and being sick and tired of. I'm sick and tired of the vagueness, non-transparency, and unaccountability. I'm sicker than sick and tired of the budget that's supposed to show the City of Harvey's findings is currently showing the City of Homewood or the Village of Homewood. Are we using that as a template to support what we're gonna do proactively for our own budget? I'm sick and tired of the minutes not being updated, right? I've already, uh, sent an email on Friday before three PM or at three PM, as stated by the rules of our executive, and I still don't see that anything has been done, yet still the minutes haven't been updated since August the fourteenth. But it took five emails just to confirm our public safety committee meeting, two illegal arrests by our mayor, Detective McGaughan in the back, Officer O'Chief Dennis behind me, all gang who who cracked their efforts to greet me over to the local Phoenix Police Department, "Yes, West City of Harvey, we no longer contain prisoners over there because of the wrongdoing that happened to Alderman Chappell." I'm sick and tired of the opposition because who voted to put a bathtub in the liquor run? Did we have a thousand dollars to really go down to MWRB on Erie Street and spend approximately sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per person for a T-shirt to say that we support? You didn't think the owner, the key wanted to go and attend that meeting? Simply, I'm sick and tired. I got more to tell you than I'm sick and tired of, but I'll leave that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the all-person from the, um, fifth ward.
Thank you. First of all, I'm honored to God, um, I thank you for this opportunity to serve. I do appreciate mine. I want to thank, um, our administration here, all of the people who help serve our residents. Um, nothing that we do would have been possibly happen without them. Um, and I want to thank the residents, um, for taking time out to be here, to be a part of this process, and also want to thank all of my co-council members. Um, I think the best way I can put how I feel is that we're better together. Um, I believe we have more in common than what separates us. Um, we just have to take the time out to want to actually do that. Um, it's very important that we do, what we do here, like I said, it's not about us, it's about the residents, and I think if we keep that forefront of everything that we do, then we'll always be on the right side of where we need to be. Um, I think that's our progress, um, regardless of what some may think, we are truly progressing, and I want to continue to progress, I want to continue to do it in a very professional manner, so that those who are watching the City of Harvey and want to work for the City of Harvey will know this is a place that they can come and we know how to do business. Um, nobody wants to do business with a company or corporation that is dysfunctional. And so that's why it's so important that we, we learn to work together. Take time out, uh, to have the, the conversation, one number seven oh eight nine nine zero eight zero one two. Let's not assume that you know someone. Take the time out to actually get to know them, you might find out, like I said, that we have a lot of common things that possibly we can't. Uh, and lastly, I want to thank the residents of the fifth ward. Um, as some people may know, I've, I've been doing some health issues, but the residents of the fifth ward were so amazing. I have so many cards saying for Thanksgiving, "I want to thank you." I want to thank God for you, I want to thank God for the service. That's so encouraging, that's so inspiring, and it just made me want to continue to, to do what I do, again, not for me, but for my glory and for the residents of the fifth ward. I thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Next, we have the all-person from the third ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I want to first say to the sixth staff, thank you so much for your services, you are appreciated, and wishing you and yours family a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you to my co-council members for your hard work and diligence in making Harvey a better place despite our obstacles. However, I'm very disappointed in those who have made it a mission to consistently fight against the city, a fight that started at the very beginning of this term. The first fight, where a loud approach to a national city was responsible for boarding up residents in the home, but not allowed to defend the city for no involvement nor an apology. This recent act of suing the city is just one of the many reasons we voted to reorganize the committee. Our oath says we are to start the deal and the best interests of the city as a whole. As an elected official, we should conduct ourselves in a dignified manner, which is another reason to vote for reorganization committee was conducted. For any elected official to align himself with anyone or a group that played a part in the financial breakdown of the city is downright in barefoot. It's a slap in the face of any resident who is bearing the tax cost for those not paying. The poor shouldn't have to pay the burden of those who are not taking responsibility for their debts. Constantly painting a narrative while playing victim that the city is doing something illegal is another act of using the flag to deflect the fact that you have heavy responsibilities as an elected official while all along having secret meetings with businesses not paying their share. Talk about transparency. If the same amount of energy used tearing down the city to build it back from its shackle of the last administration, the city will be well in its way. Instead of working to pick up the pieces at every turn, you find every way to sabotage, to degrade, cause further destruction, and break division. At this point, I'm sitting here wondering, why aren't you even here? Disattention-seeking, grandstanding, and spreading false information actors are not characteristic of a leader or an advocate. It seems amazing how people try to portray themselves as intelligent and a leader, but act like a two-year-old throwing an tantrum because you can't control the role of the sandbox. For the record, matter of fact, uh, woman told me and her co-conspirators do not have and never have had permission to post my likeness on any form of social media. I'm asking that you take it down. Just because I don't lower or lock myself as an intelligent black woman to lower my standards to air a co-conspirator during the time, it doesn't mean nobody's not in fault.
What a word, Mayor.
Chair of, uh, next, the, um... All women from the first ward, uh, all women from the first ward.
Are you, are you first, or are you down to you?
Going now to recognize the all women from the first ward. We are in the middle of argument incoming. We have to work through our argument incoming. Everyone is staying in peace. Next is the all women from the first ward.
I'm just getting hurt, too. Acknowledged. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Wow. I, I apologize, I have a call, so I'm gonna keep this active, everyone hear me?
Talk this through your lines, though.
Sorry about that. Um, I do have a call and, um, I, I just want to make this very, uh, short. I want to thank everyone here. I've learned so much from you, whether you are Team Shirley, Team Not Shirley, whether you are Team Sher, uh, the city or not, I've learned a lot from you. Part of the case of being an alderman is we get to serve. I am so grateful to serve the first ward in, in, in Harvey. This year, we gave out a hundred turkeys. I was able to partner up with Will Davis, a hundred residents of the first ward received a turkey. This cannot be done without the partnership. And December fourteenth, I welcome all of you to attend the first ward Santa visit. This is the fourteenth annual Santa visit. This event will also be a luncheon. It is not a meeting, there is no politics, it's all about the holiday and the holiday spirit. And this is especially for those who are home and lost loved ones, because we are a family, whether we get along or not, we are a family. So I want to say, God bless, everyone, have a pleasant Thanksgiving. The people that passed away in the train, my heart goes out to their family and to their loved ones. To the firemen, I wish you all safety, along with the police department, as we're entering into the holiday season. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Alderman. One more. There is no point in work. Everyone has spoken. There is no point in work. Next on our agenda is number eight approval of minutes, eight eighty, August twenty-sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-four. I have a motion by the first. Second by the third. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, you cast your votes. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes, eighty, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a motion by the first, it's second by the third. Is there any discussion? Any debate, excuse me? Hearing done, you cast your votes. Motion carries. And next is item number nine, approval of bills for payment lining for November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. That is the recommendation by the finance chair.
Mr. Mayor, there is no recommendation, just we, we decided to, uh, table the, uh, finance meeting until the next, uh, council meeting.
Thank you. Now, next item is the item ten, approval of ordinance, this revolution for the City of Harvey, ten A, will be, nimble, ten B one, motion to approve the release settlement agreement between Douglas and Spack Jr. and the City of Harvey. This motion authorized the agreement on settlement for Douglas and Spack Jr. versus City of Harvey, case number two, L six two. He's number two, he's by L six two, two, two. This was, uh, something that was also discussed in executive session. There's a motion by the first and the second by the sixth. Uh, there should be any debate as it was discussed in executive session, but if there is any, hearing, uh, cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item is item ten B two. Motion to approve the highway authority agreement between ExxonMobil Oil Corporation and the City of Harvey for formal closure of intermedial action conducted at the station property under the oversight of Illinois Protection Agency. This motion ratifies the agreement for corrective actions conducted by ExxonMobil Oil Corporation for the leaking underground storage tanks presently or formerly located at two eighty-eight West one hundred forty-seventh Street, Harvey, Illinois. A motion by the third, the second by the sixth. Is there any debate? Hearing none. You cast your vote. Motion carries. Next, ten B three. An ordinance amending Title V Business License Regulations of the City of Harvey Code of Ordinances, Chapter Five dash zero four. This ordinance authorizes all references, fees, and fines of the city code cited in Title V Business License Regulations to be stripped and replaced with a reference to Chapter Five dash zero four vehicle and truck license for the purpose of reducing certain vehicle fees and correcting inconsistencies or other fees within the chapter. Yeah, there's a motion by the first, the second by the third. Is there any debate?
Yes.
The Chair recognizes. There's a motion to call the question, uh, supersede. Um, any debate? There's a motion to call the question with supersede. Can you call for debate? Uh, there's a motion by, there's a please take in order. There's a motion. There is a motion. There is a motion. There is a motion by, would you, you are out, you are out of order. You're good. You are out of order. No, no, you cannot. You are out of order and the Chair, would you like to, would you like to appeal the Chair's decision?
Yes.
There is a motion to appeal the Chair.
I, I, I would like my motion.
There's a, there's a saying.
I would like to hear.
Would you like to, would you, that, would you like to appeal? You are not wanting to hear. Please come to order.
That's an option.
Please come to order. Motion for session.
A motion for session for what?
So let us, let us.
We have minority votes and today we're going to exercise it. And I'm simply asking the corporate council to explain that I can't put a superseding motion over a motion. You all just learned, you just found out what calling the orders of the day was at the last council meeting. Let's be clear. So let's just not blow out our own rules.
All the women, gentlemen. Please come to order.
Could you please explain?
Sure. Go to your order. Do your motion.
If there are opportunity that a superseding motion, though, if I presented another motion, can go over it?
We have a superseding motion. The Chair has already, so first of all, number one. The Chair has already made a decision. She has the right to appeal the Chair's decision to choose to do so. Other than that, the Chair has made a decision. We have a superseding motion. Okay, that is motion by the third and second by the first. If you.
Please.
So, Matt, third. We have a superseding motion to call a question. Would you please, uh, hold the roll, man? If, if you were to vote, yes, if you're to call it, I wouldn't know. What was that? No, this is the motion to call a question.
This is the one that the third word.
I need to change, man. It's the wrong one. I thought it was the one that was trying to. He thought it was called under, uh.
So this motion passes. So we were having, we have a motion to, we have a motion to approve. The motion was by, originally by whom? A motion by the first and second by the third. Okay, you may cast your votes. Motion carries. There is no point of order. When the, is there a point of order as far as parliamentary procedures concerned? What's, what is the point of order?
My question is that we have to go with that holiday question.
We did that already. That would be the first one. And now we will question, which is the ordinance amending Title V Business License Regulations. Motion carries. Next item, ten B four. A resolution authorizing maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. The resolution authorizing the use of motor fuel tax funds for the purpose maintaining streets and highways under the applicable provisions of Illinois Highway Code from May first, two thousand twenty-four to April thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Just that ordinance number that we just passed is three five zero one.
My apologies.
Three five zero one.
That's ten B three. The ordinance number is ten.
Three five, three five zero one.
Three five zero one. So that's the ten B four. That is a, um, we have a motion by the first and the second by the third. Is there any debate? Hearing none. You may cast your vote. Motion is carrying.
And that's resolution three zero nine two. Three zero nine two.
Next item. On the agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged. Appreciate it. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish our business on the agenda and with respect to everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the ordinance. And no immediate action will be taken on, in the public comment issue. So this, please come to order. Please come to order. All the women, please come to order. All women. All the women, please come to order. Um, so, so there is a.
They called for a P O I.
So.
But I do want to know.
All the women come to order.
Would you explain?
There is, so, once again, the all the women of the third and the second ward will not come to order. There, uh, the Chair will ask for a motion to censor the all the women.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a, there is a motion to adjourn, which is superseding. That was related to that. So first we will deal with the motion to adjourn and then we will go back to the motion to censor, please. Uh, should be, should have, uh, motion to adjourn then. All the favor is signed by by saying nine. Do you want to adjourn? To adjourn? You want to adjourn?
Yes.
Well, no. Oh, yeah. Right, no, sir.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Yes. Motion to adjourn. I heard, I heard, I heard six. Would you please, please plead lower than this? Uh, you know what?
What?
Once again, there was a motion to censor and remove the all women from the second ward. I have, I have a motion by the third. I have a second by the who? The, the fifth.
And then we get a motion to adjourn.
Let's call it.
Motion to vacate the Chair since we go on our motion. Say that, Tracy.
No, we're not doing the second. That's what we're doing. Please, please cast your votes, please.
Put that in motion. Too much E motion up there.
Motion passed. I, I'm, uh, uh, all the women of second ward, would you please remove yourself from the seat?
For what?
Thank you.
Did you say that?
Would you please, would you please remove yourself from the seat? Here we go.
You're a very media. All the women of the third ward.
Hold the board, man. Remove yourself from the. Hold the board. Hold the board.
You're not getting anything, man.
You know what?
You're moving the heat now.
You know what?
I don't answer to you. You don't have to. You know where we at? You know where we at?
Y'all don't have a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, relax. Relax. Oh, they all, they all working together. They all working together.
Girl, you don't know nothing about Parliament in Korea.
They don't know any. Everybody, relax.
Nobody wants you.
Yes. Kobe. You ride along with that garbage too.
I know, I know how it's going. I'm gonna help out. Well, all the people that arrested me got to walk me out of here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We're gonna take it. And just, just allow for, um, emotions to, to see. We're gonna, we're gonna take five minutes of a recess, okay, everyone? Thank you.
Wow. He is crazy. Out of control. He's out of control again. Are you taking off? Oh, okay. Yeah, we almost made it to public comment. That's actually the best, if you want to stay for public comment, that's usually the best.
I don't think it's gonna accomplish anything. It's gonna be fentinado.
Yeah.
They're trying to show.
A lot of times it's more, it's more, uh, yeah.
It's too, it's too emotional.
Or, or it's too inform the public, you know, the, the public comments. Because the board, uh, they don't usually listen. Yes. Um, basically, yep. I mean, this has happened a few times with the aldermen. So, but we're doing, I mean, we're almost to public comment, so that's good. But yeah, like he, the mayor, um, consistently will harass the, um, you know, the second and the third ward aldermen, because they ask questions about, uh, money and, uh, and you can see he denied her, she was trying to call, bring a board or something, you know, parliamentary there. Um, that I'm not sure about. I'm trying to, we're gonna, we're gonna have to follow up and figure this out.
She was trying to say why.
Ex- exactly. So that's why we're like, he, he just makes up his own rules. Clark makes up his own rules.
What the lawyer is saying, and the lawyer is just sitting there like a buck on a log. And he referred to the lawyer, you know.
Exactly.
And he started telling everyone when the lawyer was trying to talk. And he starts talking.
Right, he overs talks the lawyer. Mm-hmm. Exactly. Yep. And did you notice he didn't even allow the third ward to have a, an alderman to comment?
A what?
Uh, the al-, all the, the alve got to comment. He just skipped over him. But he didn't like him. I mean, because he doesn't want him to speak up. He did. And he spoke up. And he said, and the mayor just said, no, we're done. So, and then he calls us, you know, they call this democracy. So that's why, you know, the federal lawsuit was just filed that I'm in, Kobe's in, a whole bunch of businesses are in that allege civil rights, you know, civil rights violations, extortion, a whole bunch of other charges, so.
It's so strange that, um, he, the mayor's not there and then he comes in like a drug. And escorted by the police.
Exactly. And to the days, like, whoa, like the king. Very dramatic.
Just up there with everybody.
Right. Absolutely. And that's how it should be, but, um, you know, unfortunately, he just, uh, he likes to be untouchable. But yes, I'm sure that you're seeing this in action. She's right here, Glenda, the lady that was removed. She's still here. I might peek my head out there just to make sure she's okay. Are you okay, Glenda?
I'm fine. Why do they put you out, Ms. Glenda?
Yeah, did they say why they put you out? We just wanted to try to get.
Uh, disorderly conduct. I was disruptive, apparently.
You didn't say, I didn't hear nothing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I did.
I was disruptive when I challenged, why am I being asked to leave? So that's why I'm getting a citation, because that was disruptive.
Okay. But we just wanted to document it.
I don't know who to, or what's what.
Make sure you take tickets for real officers and not fake ones. Cause, cause some of these get, I want y'all to think I got no room.
Right.
Some of these folks ain't even certified, but I didn't hear a word of them.
So they're giving, yeah, I was saying, I didn't hear anything, but you're getting a ticket for?
I said something under my breath and apparently that was enough to.
Oh. I didn't hear, I, yeah, I didn't hear anything on the other side, but how much is the ticket for? Hi. Hmm, okay. Well. We'll have to follow up with that.
Here we are, going to go back to board. We could be a meeting. It is meeting on night. Ian, please, uh, check yourself in to the, uh, room hall. Check yourself in to the, uh, room hall. Alright, we're ready, we're ready to proceed.
Point of order.
Yes.
Most seconds to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by the third and a second by the sixth. All the favor, six to five, to stand on.
Point of order. Point of order.
Hearing done. I was having...
Point of order, point of order.
There is no point of order.
So we, we not doing a lot of business to...
We are now adjourned.
What about our public comment? You all said what you wanted to say. Right. Crazy. Crazy. So you see here, folks, aldermen all have lots to say, but they don't want to listen to the residents.
Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the building. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the building.
Right. Aldermen got lots to say, but they don't want to listen to the residents. You see them right here, all four of them, all four of their faces right here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the building.
Wait a damn minute. I can only walk so fast.
Understood.
Better watch out, they might arrest you if you don't move fast enough. No, because they ended it. They ended it early. We had a whole bunch of people that needed to comment about urgent things. I guess they didn't want to listen to us. Pretty crazy. Pretty crazy. So here they are. They want to tell us how they feel, but they don't want to listen to us. Okay. As usual, you can see tons of police officers are here, but they're not. We should be able to. I'm so glad that you saw this. You see how he just runs things like a third world country?
You need to call the sheriff when this happens. We need to call, have the Cook County Sheriff ready. You need to have that number ready. You need to call him. We have an open meeting here. It's a city council meeting, and public voices are being denied.
Right. And you see how they use, use the police on us?
People's voices are being denied. It's a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
And you are exactly right, one hundred percent right.
It's against the law.
Yep.
So we need to call the sheriff.
Uh, we will, we'll definitely file a violation or a complaint of a violation.
We need to call the sheriff when this happens.
See, and that's what I said.
We could try. If someone pulls up the number, you can call. I don't know if they'll come out.
They need to get Illinois involved.